June 2nd, called order at 6:34 PM. We're going to pass over appointment on local hazard mitigation planning committee members. And the review of the surplus equipment request, the final review of interested internal parties is still pending. So we'll bring it back for a third read once that's complete. And we'll pass over the review of the modular office procurement for public works. It's not quite complete. With that, it's 6:35. So we had a discussion regarding speeding concerns at Moore Street. Willie, I know you reached out to Brian to schedule this time. So I don't know if you are the spokesperson or if someone else would like to, who is, would please come up?
We're sharing it. He was going to start.
Okay, all right. If you could come up and to the table and introduce yourself for the viewing audience, please.
Good afternoon. Well, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Kim Skirm. I live on Moore Street. It's actually really awesome to see your names. I've seen them on the ballot, but I've never met you in person. So it's great to know who we voted for. So thank you.
Welcome.
We just want to take a little bit of your time today for a really important concern that has come to the attention of the residents at Moore Street. I've been in Irving now since 2017 and I've loved living in our area. And I think we have sort of reached a precipice. I'm sure most of you are aware. And if you're not, on April 29th, just a month ago, we had a fatality unfortunately on Moore Street. A young man, Trevon Bell, was traveling on his motorcycle and unfortunately was in an altercation with a vehicle. And unfortunately literally died in our street in front of residents in our neighborhood. And you know, I'm not sure all the details of this case, but I can tell you that it definitely, these vehicles were, you know, it is a very busy street. And you know, we've said in the neighborhood many times and I've seen even in our own yard, many instances where small children are trying to cross Moore Street to go to our brand new awesomely renovated park. And it has been really hard to watch a lot of real close misses where kids have almost been hit trying to cross that area. So you know, Ms. Willie and I have been talking about this now for several years. And unfortunately this recent fatality really brought it to light. So we would really appreciate a moment of your time and again, really appreciate you allowing us to speak today with some of our ideas about what we want to do. And hopefully make this a little safer area for everyone and especially kids going to the park. So.
Well, thank you both for bringing it to us. And you know, I know we don't have a ton of time tonight. So I appreciate kind of bringing it, set kind of the stage on what your thoughts are. And then we can kind of figure out where do we go forward from here. You know, I'm sure we unfortunately won't, you know, just be able to take decisive action in one meeting.
For sure.
But give us a chance to kind of understand what your thoughts are, what we might be able to do and continue the conversation. So thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, and then I'd like to talk a little bit about, first of all, I'd like to give you the letters that are signed by the neighborhood president. And I think you saw, already seen the letter.
Yes.
In there, we've, we've shown you a few of the ideas that we have. But in the research that I've done, pardon me, I'm going to read this pretty much because I don't want to forget anything. In the research I've done, I found many traffic calming ideas. I think you'll find several of them in the letter, including strategically placed stop signs, bollards and speed cushions. Since we wrote this letter, I've discovered several other ideas. Street art has been shown to calm traffic in some of the cities in our country. And I saw that in, demonstrated in Louisville and in Pittsburgh, that they were showing some really great results from painting on the street. Painting crosswalks, painting, painting breakdown lanes, that it seems to give the illusion that the streets are narrower and people slow down, which is a really nice way to do it. It brightens the neighborhood and it, and it serves the purpose. We as a committee have received very positive responses from our neighbors. When we approached them, I've, I've come to the door and I've told them about our committee. And they have really welcomed me in saying, you know, thank you, thank you. We've been thinking about this. We really want something done. And I, I thought, well, this is awesome. So people are really showing a lot of excitement over this. So I think that we can get some participation from some of our neighbors, which is, it's really, it's really warm to my heart to see this. So as I'm talking to them, and I'm talking to people on the streets just surrounding the park, basically, we haven't gone much further than that. And they're, they're seeing a lot of the same issues that we are. Even though they're not on Moore Street, they're getting a lot of speeding on, on the side streets as well. So what we have talked about was possibly just starting with Moore Street, seeing what works. You know, okay, we tried this. It didn't work. Let's take that out. Let's try something else. And just moving it, once we figure out, you know, what works, we can move it from street to street, you know, and keep, keep expanding the program and use it in different neighborhoods. But since we are the most sickly settled part of Irving, I think it's a great way to start. And we've really, we have a real problem where we're at. In fact, this afternoon, I came home and expected to see one patrol car sitting at the end of Mechanic Street because I had spoken to the officer that morning, this morning about it. And he said, okay, I'll come back at 3:30. Well, instead of one, I found two officers in two cars. Because so many speeders were going by that one couldn't keep up. And they gave 12 tickets out in an hour. And that was, you know, and really and truly, they're not jumping on somebody for driving one or two miles an hour over the speed limit. I have no doubt about it. So it's really proved out what we're talking about. Our primary goal here is to make our streets safer. And you know, Kim has mentioned that he has seen children almost hit.
Yes.
In the streets. Well, my child was hit back years ago. He's 41 now, but he was 12 years old. And he was hit right in front of my house. So I'm really well aware of what can happen. And thank goodness Casey was okay. He was hit by an older gentleman who was driving very, very conservatively. And it was Casey's fault. He bolted right in front of the car. So, because he was 12 and an airhead. But it is something that happens. And we, you know, I'm, I'm very, very aware of teenagers in our neighborhood because they don't, they're not looking where they're going. They're being teenagers. The children, the little ones usually have a parent holding their hands, but the teenagers are really at risk. And so we would like to see the safety, but we also want to see a little more peace and quiet. I mean, right now, it's like living on a race, it's like living at a racetrack. There are times that we're watching TV, we can't hear it with the windows closed. And God forbid we open up the windows because it's really, really loud. And a lot of it is loud mufflers and a lot, and the rest of it is motorcycles. They're very loud, doing wheelies down the street. And that's not a joke. They really are. They're doing wheelies down our street. So things are pretty out of control at this point. So we'd really like to come back to having a neighborhood again, instead of feeling like we're living at a raceway. Our hope is that you guys are really willing to work with us and that you can take into consideration some of the things we've talked about and maybe bring back other ideas. I know that, that Rob has worked with us with, with the police department and they have been awesome. And I can't say more than that. They're awesome. But we don't have a large enough police department to keep someone there the hours that it needs to happen. So something else has to bring this, these speeds down. So I'm hoping that some of these measures that we've come up with or some that you introduced and that maybe we can work together to, you know, to be implemented. And we could come back maybe in a week or two weeks and meet again and see where we're going with this and see what a budget might look like and, and who would do, you know, what, what we would do and how we would gather the community together to make this work.
Thank you. I think that's, you know, that's directionally what I was anticipating tonight too, was, was understanding, hearing the proposals. I appreciate the engagement and I'm sure, you know, I speak for the board to say that too, that the residents are looking at this and bringing ideas on, what could we do? Because like you said, we can do what we can do, but there's a limit to our bandwidth too. And what we've seen or experienced or have time to research. So you know, bringing ideas that we may not have considered or be aware of and has worked in other areas is great. So I appreciate that. I think there's a variety of challenges with it being, you know, Route 63. So what we can and can't do versus what we have to get state permission or a state has to do because it's technically, I think, still state highway. So investigating, at least understanding that, I just, I personally don't know. And if either of you have comments you want to add or questions, please, please go ahead.
More of a comment than a question. And I was just going to express appreciation. Typically when we hear complaints about things that are happening, they're not followed up with the forethought of looking through potential solutions. You know, and it's not that this is every solution out there, but it gets the conversation going. A lot more so than just a vocal, you know, voice that says, we have a problem now. You have to find all the solutions and fix it. So I really appreciate the level of effort that you already put in now just to get to this point, so we can have this conversation. I've looked at a few of the, the traffic logics. We looked at some of those with other areas, you know, heavily congested on the other side of town where we have speed being an issue in some of those streets as well. There's pros and cons to all of those. What I really appreciated and started to think about was the use of the stop signs. Again, I don't know how that plays into the transition from state highway to town own. If there's still additional, because it is still Route 63, if there's still additional DOT approval or if we have more, you know, ability to do stuff in that section of less than more. So I have to look at, you know, what those, those ramifications are. But there's some strategic points in there, I think, that some of these combination of things might work. And still keep the, still keep traffic flowing because it is a throughway.
It's not going to be perfect.
Yeah.
You know, it never was.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Yeah.
It never was perfect, but we'd like to see it slow down. If we could get the people to just slow down some, we'd be very happy. I don't care if you put a stop sign at every corner. You know, I don't care if they want to drive through, you know, on Route 63. Let them go some other route, you know, but we're tired of it.
Yeah, we are. And you know, the park is such a beautiful resource that we've put, you all at the town have put tons of energy and time into this and obviously funds and people love the park. I mean, it's a really popular area. And it's, it's really hard to have our, we love our house. We love living in Irving, but it's hard. I'm going to be honest with you to be on that corner, y'all. It is the most traffic, crosswalk, probably, I feel like in the entire state of Massachusetts with the number of kids that want to go to this park and watching them every day. I mean, it's like chum in the water for sharks. It's really hard to watch. So we just really appreciate it so much of you taking time to, again, listen and, and you know, take this in consideration. And honestly, it's really brought us closer together as a neighborhood. You know, people, people really are concerned about this. And a lot of folks have thanked us. And I mean, you know, even if we can't get a perfect solution, I think just knowing that, that we live in a community that wants to come together to do something about this. It's inspiring, you know, so we appreciate it.
For us too. So I was just, as, as frequently happens, Scott steals my thoughts. So I won't regurgitate what came out of his mouth. But I, I can certainly understand the problem, having tried in my own way to address that in my time. And thank you for recognizing that it's not going to be an easy fix and understanding that, you know, the town is certainly mindful of safety and keeping our residents and our, you know, friends in the community safe. We've had some data where we've tried measures in other parts of town and the data resulted that it actually made the problem worse. So we want to be careful of that. But what I will say is, you know, if nothing else, we can bring this conversation to the Commonwealth and talk and find out what they'd be willing to do to partner with us and address it in some way.
Well, there's a couple of very quick things that could be done. And one of them is to change where the speed limit signs are. It should not start being 25 miles an hour in front of the fire station. It should start at Sem Drive because these people are coming down and they're going fast. And they're not slowing down to 35. And then they're certainly not slowing down to 25 all of a sudden. It's in, it's in a really bad place. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's right in, they're right in our neighborhood already. And then it turns to 35 miles an hour going north in front of the old library. And that's, that makes no sense because we're still pretty heavily settled right up to Sem Drive. So I'm, I'm thinking that those signs both need to be changed. They need to be changed to where Sem Drive hits Moore Street. And I think that's something that we have control over because we control that part of the street, as far as I understand. Is that right?
So, yes, it's not necessarily that simple though. So you know, I'm just caution. We'll look into it obviously, but maybe to, to add on to what Jim was alluding to a little bit. When we do some of the traffic data studies needed to adjust speed limits and such, they sometimes indicate the speed should be higher, not lower, when we've been in areas where this has been wanted before.
Aren't the laws changing?
There's the talk about laws changing. Yeah, but the, the data has, has indicated a shift in the other direction with speed limits. So when we data, when the data study is required to kind of guide the changes in speed have been done before. So it doesn't always support the direction we would like to go. So we just have to be cautious about whether that path is always.
It makes no sense why it's 25 miles an hour on the Irving side and it's 20 miles an hour on the Montague side of Miller's Falls. It's 20 miles an hour all the way through until you hit Irving, then it goes up to 25.
Understood, understood. So I'm not saying we can or can't, but we just have to be thoughtful about how we go through that process. So we don't end up actually kind of having data that is pushing us to go the opposite direction or the direction that we don't want to go, which is to raise those limits, not to reduce them.
Well, if we want to do a study, maybe we should just have a police car sit out there because they slow down nicely.
That might be a way to fund this. Maybe we should, maybe we should put the entire police force there.
48 hours while we do the study?
I mean, 12 tickets. I don't know how much a ticket costs, but it's got to be probably, definitely cover one stop sign. We're getting creative here. Listen, this is Moore Street. It's unlike any street in Irving. We will figure out a solution. And again, it's just been really neat to see the neighbors and come together on this. And, and this idea that Ms. Willie had with the speed limit, this came out of conversations with folks, you know, it's just nice to hear that. So we appreciate it.
And it's not alone to Moore and it's not alone to the side of town. We hear and have looked at and are, you know, continuing to look at the same kind of concerns where, you know, whether it's how roads have changed in, you know, 5,000, 100 years or how, you know, Google and other, you know, ways and all these things have changed, how people drive. We see this impact in lots of roads. And so all the ideas and all the different ways and we're learning. And we have some engineering work that we are working on coming up in the next, you know, six to 12 months on the other side of town in areas of this that keep giving us new ideas and different ways to approach this stuff. So we definitely want to, to work together to try to find solutions or anything that will help move the needle. Right? So.
Okay. So how about, what, when can we come back and meet again?
Yeah. So let's, we'll need a little time to get some feedback from MassDOT and it's not always a, a one day effort. Our next meeting is, let's see, the 9th and then the 23rd. We have a special on the 25th. So how about the 23rd of June?
Okay.
Give us a few weeks to, you know, while we have a few other moving parts and end of fiscal year. So it's a little busy. But see what we can get for some information on some of these ideas and what steps may be next to try to proceed or not.
And if there's any calls that need to be made, we can help with that. I mean, because we're working at a, you know, we're working on a committee, we can help.
Okay. Well, we appreciate the help. So yeah, as we get some information or if we need something, you know, kind of chased down and we can at least make you aware of that. And if it's something that the team can take on and help us get that data, that'd be great.
That'd be great. Definitely. Super.
Excellent. So let's plan for, let's plan for 6:45 on the 23rd.
Perfect. Thank you so much again for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for putting all this together and for coming.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
So to, to understand what we can and can't do, so reach out to DOT and to, you know, I know we've done some work in the past around speed limits. So understanding how can we and what steps, if any, have to be taken before we can make those changes. And what is involved with stop signs and how much is the state involved or not because of where it is in those decisions. I think we're familiar with some of the road narrowing technologies and, you know, humps and things like that we've looked at before. So is there anything else that you guys want for data around that stuff right now?
No, the stuff I was just writing down some notes on to be prepared for the next meeting is looking at, I'm looking at potential combos of the speed calming. I actually was really intrigued by the paint.
The artwork?
The artwork. You know, something that is not, that does it through visual trick and technique rather than, you know, obstructions. But also combining that with, I think there's some locations where, provided we get the info that I think we'll get from DOT, there's a way to sort of segment out that road where you're forced to stop in certain areas, certain key intersections could work. And then the last one is depending on what DOT says, I see no problem with dropping that to a 25 at Sem Drive so that their approach is already in theory going to be slower. Now, in theory on what the sign tells you to drive and, you know, but also keeping in mind that the tragedy that they were talking about, those will still happen. Those anomalies of, you know, decision making and unfortunate incidents will still happen. It's unfortunate. This is what caused us to have this conversation. But none of our fixes are going to say that going forward, once these, you know, stop signs are put in or, or, you know, traffic logics pads or cushions, that this will never happen again. I just want people to be very clear that we'll do the best we can to come it. But knowing that we can't prevent everything, we can just lessen the likelihood. So that's all I was looking at is to paint the stop signs and the reduction of the down to 25 Earl here on the approach into Moore coming off of Northfield.
Yep.
I was going to ask, maybe a follow up to that is, I know we do painting at certain times through the year. Glenn, so since you're here. What's our schedule on that?
Usually right before school starts.
Okay, in the fall.
So in the fall time, late July, early August.
Got it. Okay.
As crosswalk wise, yes. Right, the line painting is, you know, fall time also, but crosswalks is before school opens back up.
Yeah. And I think what she's talking about is the, the measures that you see that are not just the redoing of the white line of the crosswalk or it's putting actual murals or artwork in those. If you've got a breakdown lane, a bike lane on the, you know, on the edge of the road, to brighten that up with actual mural artwork, it creates that narrowing effect where people are like, oh, I gotta, this is a tighter road than I thought it was, even though it hasn't changed. Your eye will perceive that as a tighter road and therefore potentially back off the gas a little bit. So it's not so much that I would expect that you're going to break out your paintbrush and start putting in murals on those sides.
You never know.
But it sounds like we have a committee of residents that would say, if that was a measure that we were saying that we were behind, it's not a lot of cost to, you know, procure some materials to do that as long as, you know, we can figure out how to, how to make it happen safely. You know, that's a, an easy, an easy one to put on the top of the list.
Well, and I also wonder, and I didn't drive down there and look before this, but you know, we refresh those before school, which makes sense. But should we refresh them kind of once the bulk of the winter season's over? Are they worn in the, in the spring enough that maybe we should do, do, you know, refresh them up twice a year or something? You know, obviously it's not every white line and everything, but crosswalks and things like that where, where we, you know, it's good to refresh that safety if it's getting worn every spring, you know, so without looking at it, I'm not saying that it does need to be, but maybe that is something that would help too.
Sure. One more thing we can try to. One more thing we can try to, so are they looking to meet in two weeks?
We said the 23rd.
23rd?
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Okay, so what I can do is I can reach out to the ForCog tomorrow. They always send out a request in the springtime about traffic counts. So if you're all right with this, I'll ask for one to be put at Mechanic Street and then one to be put off just south of SEM Drive on Moore Street. And so they'll get them coming off of, off of 63 and by the time they cross the railroad tracks coming up. And, you know, once they get down to Mechanic Street. I think if we put it too close down to Prospect Street, it's not gonna be very accurate. So I think if we put it at the Mechanic Street intersection, especially for the northbound.
Yeah, I agree.
If you are all set with that or if you want them in different locations on Moore Street.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, if you're too close to the-
If you're too close to the tracks, it's, you're gonna get false information. And that's why I think like the Mechanic Street area.
I am, I'm just, I'm just visualizing.
I look over, he's looking at a map to see where, where you're talking about.
I'm just looking at the bounds and thinking about it, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, but Prospect Central between that and Mechanic makes sense. That's what you're getting at, is you're not picking up Prospect Street, that intersection.
Correct.
Yeah.
You're allowing everybody to get over the tracks, head north, and then you're allowing, you're talking further up for the southbound, where you, where do you-
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna span both, both lanes, but if we do it just coming off of SEM Drive, like just south of SEM Drive, they'll, they'll attach another one there. I think there's a telephone pole that they can tie it to just below the Forest Street, Moore Street intersection. Just below that.
So between that and the shed, the salt shed there?
That makes sense. I don't have a problem with that.
I'll, I'll see how busy they are, if they can get them out within the next couple of weeks. That way at least they can get a week's data, data before.
How many can we ask?
They normally respond pretty quickly with it, once they get it.
How many can we ask for?
How many can we ask for? We can ask for as many as they want, it just all depends on, you know, who else has asked and when they're available to put them out.
Just wondering if we shouldn't go down and get one Leicester, you know, near Gun or somewhere as well beyond-
Leicester down like Pratt Street?
Like between Pratt and Gun at Leicester or Leicester River, you know, I don't, I don't know, we can do it right at the intersection over the bridge, probably not. But so probably come up a little bit on that hill.
No, we'd probably just do it right just above Pratt Street.
Below Pratt?
Yeah, probably just above Pratt Street a little bit.
Just south of Pratt?
Yeah, they can put, yeah, they can put one there, be just above the Red Lion.
Either one.
Yeah, more, more north I guess, but as, you'll pick between Prospect and Pratt, funneling also with 63, they all come together at Leicester there between that and Gun, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll see if they can do them all at the same time. I'll let them know what's going on, that the community has come forward to y'all and, and see if they can get them all out at the same time.
Chief, did you have something?
I was just gonna add, I can talk with Glenn, I can talk with Glenn, but I know a, a few of our community police departments have access to the counters too and have offered them. I think, I don't want to possibly greenfielding Gil. So if, if the call can't get them out to us in a couple of weeks, maybe we can reach out to one of them too and get them out, so.
Excellent, great.
All right, I'll let you-
Thanks, chief. Okay, that sounds good. Any others things that we didn't cover? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, it is 7:02 PM, so we call a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee for a review of the special town meeting warrant and a one-stop grant application.
Reload everything, didn't have a choice, I had a forced update.
I saw, I looked over inside, saying updating, I was like, oh, I got you.
I didn't have a choice. It gave me an option of restart now or restart in five minutes.
If you do five minutes fast enough, it will let you string that out, five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, eventually it does timeout though.
Yeah.
Or if you don't answer quick enough, it decides you didn't answer, so it was gonna do it.
It does it automatically, yeah.
It's happened to me before.
We'll talk to somebody in IT about that.
The board may have to set some policies or something.
Right.
Welcome, everyone. So we'll start with the one-stop, one-stop for growth grant application draft. Thinking this one will be quick, probably, but you'll have a chance to skim through it, any questions or comments anyone had?
Can I just make one little update?
Does it change what we have?
Slightly.
Okay, sure.
Earlier this morning, I got the update from Weston Sampson on the revised opinion of probable cost.
Okay.
So I think I noted that your, the budget that was in the draft may be updated on Monday. So I just want to clarify that the final total amount now would be $2,421,200.
Two, four, twenty-one, two-hundred?
Correct.
Is that primarily adjustment in construction or is it across the board?
Yeah, so there were additional side amenities that weren't included in the initial opinion. So it's got the sidewalks, the benches that we talked about, the shade trees and the streetlights. Those things had not been included. And so obviously that then increases the contingency that we're gonna hold on the construction and things like that, so.
Okay, but the bulk of 180 is construction contingency, those pieces?
Exactly.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns?
Brian, does that slight change up from the 2.2 change the match amount?
No, so there is no match requirement, and actually I'm glad you brought that up. So there is no match requirement in this. I think there's a question about whether or not that helps us in terms of our competitiveness. The match that we've proposed to date is what you have already worked with the voters to appropriate, right? And so there's a $149,000 balance that we've all been talking about, there's an article on your STM warrant. So we wanted to be clear with the Massachusetts team when they reviewed this application that the voters had approved $226,000, we're still spending off that money. There's a portion that's already been done, the Northfield Road section's done. And that remaining work is available, or that funding is available to be used on Care Drive. And that's, again, the STM article that we're gonna discuss. So that's how we structured that match component.
Are we in blue units? I thought it was 28, or am I totally misremembering that?
I think I kept saying 28, but it's been 26.
Okay.
Eighteen senior units, eight multi-generational units.
Okay.
Correct.
Can't let you do math, that's all.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the new permanent full-time job created, is that a administrative or a?
I think that's how you classify it for RDI, it's their building management position. To be responsible, there's obviously gonna be maintenance staff, we don't know exactly how that's gonna get structured, so we didn't want to overcommit the maintenance portion of it. Whether they contract that out to a vendor or if they do that in-house, we're not, we're not sure at this point.
But a property management type role, is there FTE that they're reciting?
Correct.
So the funding requested breakout assumes the match pays for different things?
So the match is, is being used to pay towards tasks one through four, I believe, on the engineering proposals of the water and wastewater, not on the engineering for the road. So we're looking for the future tasks once we get the construction for the water and so to be picked up by the grant. And for the road portion, for it to pick up from conceptual all the way through construction administration.
Got it. So our funding request doesn't itemize the fees that we plan to cover with our match, only the fees that we're requesting funding for?
Currently tracking that in a different spreadsheet because the application doesn't ask that question.
Okay, well, yeah, in 210 it talks about what we asked for, but then later on in, in 212, it shows also what we match and then total.
And there's a narrative section, I can't remember if it, the numbers are all jumbling together in terms of what section we put the information, but there is a narrative section related to the match and what we're using it for.
Yep.
And I tried to explain in there that we had already done some of the work, there was 149,000 left. As of right now, 137,8 would be directly attributed to the engineering of those two utilities if the voters say yes at the special town meeting.
Okay, got it, yeah, I see it on 211 there, okay. Other questions, comments, any concerns? I think the filing is, is it this week?
It's gonna be Wednesday.
Wednesday?
So our hope is to spend all of tomorrow finalizing this. There was a little feedback from Senior Housing, we're gonna be working in those edits. Any feedback from tonight? And then if everything's looking good tomorrow evening or tomorrow afternoon, apply, worst case scenario, we'll do it first thing Wednesday morning.
I don't have any other concerns with it. Anyone else? I have nothing else at this time. Good, okay, all right. You want to vote to proceed, are you good with, we're all good?
If you all are satisfied with that, then I will proceed. Thank you.
Good to proceed. Thank you, sounds good.
Thank you to you and Glenn and the Senior Housing Committee for doing this, I know it was a lot of work.
Yeah.
Let's just hope it's funded.
Cross our fingers that we get it funded. All right, review initiatives of a special town meeting warrant. So. Article one, filing Bridge, what do you have for updates?
So at this point, I don't have confirmation from Wendell whether they're going to proceed with chapter 90. I do not believe it's gonna be on the town meeting warrant. So if they don't do chapter 90, then that's gonna have to be some other grant source in the future for them. And from our standpoint, timing things for two towns is going to continue to be a challenge. And so I think your most prudent action is to have the money ready to go so that we can proceed. We're trying to make the offer to, to the administrative lift and support them through this work. I think their town meeting is this week, so hopefully there's a little more bandwidth to have that conversation. So I guess my encouragement to you all is to keep it on the warrant. Worst case, we have a motion to pass over it at town meeting if that didn't seem prudent when we get to that point.
What about chapter nine, or chapter 90?
So having the conversation with Glenn earlier today, you've got two-ish large projects on the horizon. I know that he's spoken to you all about Ridge Road in the past few years. It has not been worked on substantially since it was first constructed, but we have some serious reconstruction, I think, as we go down to the base material and be restructured. SEM Drive is failing on the bowling alley side, likely from all of the heavy vehicles that use that road. So that's another stretch that needs to be repaired and repaved, and it may make sense to do those two things together. So those were the next big projects on the horizon. In terms of the other chapter 90 tasks that we've had out there, we've got things like the top coat to Flag Hill we haven't done yet and some of the other smaller projects that are on the horizon.
What do we have for funding?
I'm gonna ask that question. We need to look in one more place.
That we haven't-
Glenn wants to better explain his plans for chapter 90 while I pull that up for you.
Come on up.
You've just did a great job.
If you have anything to add.
I said it earlier, I do not want to misrepresent his plans.
While he's looking at the numbers, just high level, have you been here in thinking about those projects? Were you anticipating, kind of, what we have anticipated for chapter 90 over the next X number of years was gonna get there? Or that was just gonna help with it?
It was just gonna help with it, I was gonna be asking the town for money this year when we come down to budget season.
For the next capital?
For, for the next, uh, next round of capitals. Ridge Road's been put off for a few years now, we've done a lot of patchwork onto it. This year, we're actually fixing all the drainage ourself because when you get a road construction company in there to do the drainage, it's like $10,000 a structure to replace structures. These don't need to be changed, the tops just need to be replaced on them. So we'll be doing all that work and there's quite a few on Ridge Road alone. And the swales will all be taken care of also. So hopefully this is just gonna be a mill and, mill and overlay, but with new berm. I would love to see the first corner restructured. As you, once you get up onto Ridge Road, the first left-hand turn, I would love to see that restructured. I think it's way too narrow of a corner when the road was built and the town took it over. That's gonna come with a cost. So the plan was later this summer to get Bill from Weston and Sampson out and give us a probable cost on it. I think we have a pretty wide layout through there, but there's also a structure right top and bottom of that inside corner, which they would have to be moved if that's what it came down to. As far as the rest of the road width-wise, everything gets, it's perfectly fine, it's just that first corner. And at SEM Drive, again, we've patched it and patched it for years. It takes a beating with the truck traffic. Was it originally built for the truck, truck traffic that cuts between Route 2 and 63? Probably not, as we're finding on all our roads.
Are we gonna look?
I was gonna say, we don't have any core samples on that for what the base material is and how deep it is?
No, that's all something that would be done. I can tell you Ridge Road does not have a lot. There's three, two, four inches maximum on that road.
Yeah, I was more concerned about SEM with the heavy traffic.
I was gonna say, when we do that, we're gonna take that approach, right? Do a full, comprehensive analysis and try to bring it to a standard that'll hold up better?
Correct. Cause it's, it's, actually it's, it's probably a road that would probably have to go right down to the gravel and start over.
Yeah.
And I would not be surprised when they do the core samples on Ridge Road, it's gonna be the same thing.
And then Flag we know about and then North, what wasn't done, we anticipate to be part of either Bridge or Route 2 improvements or Lower North Street improvements anyway, right, okay?
Yep.
Does Mass DOT have any historical data on SEM Drive from when they adjusted the angles of that and brought the hump down and changed the, the grade of SEM?
If they did, it would just be on their end of it, probably like 15 feet, probably about 15, 20 feet into it. But we can certainly reach out. They typically go, you know, just whatever their, their road width is, their layout into our connecting road. So it's probably about 15 feet on each end of it. But we can check in with them and see.
Was that always a town road or did we take that on? Was that county road that we took on at some point or, don't know? Okay.
I don't know. We, we as a town have not done any maintenance to the road itself other than sweeping line painting. They help us plow it. If Thomas goes, gets there first, then they plow it. State, state usually plows it cause it's a connecting road.
Just to make so-
They just won't pick their plow up, yeah. But as for paving, I don't think it's been done since I've been here. Any other problem is too, there's a bus stop there now without, not an actual bus pull-off. So the bus will pull off over, off the white line and break the edge of the roads up. Trucks, tractor trailers going in and out of the parking lot, same thing, they're in the grass, breaking the edge of the roads off.
Yeah, traffic study, the sidewalks, the whole thing, that's gonna be quite a project for a short area, I expect. Yeah, traffic study, the sidewalks, the whole thing, that's gonna be quite a project for a short area, I expect, between the traffic size, load, volume.
Yep.
And changes needed. Did you?
So if I'm reading this correctly, and this is the balance as of December thirty-first, so this is after we closed out the North Street project, which was just over four hundred thousand dollars. Your remaining balance should be two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four sixty-six. And we have an email from about a month ago that says there's approximately eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars coming in fair share funds for FY twenty-five. And we haven't received our FY twenty-six allocation yet, but that typically comes around August, September.
And it's right around eighty-four thousand, eighty-three, eighty-four thousand.
To be fair though, just that is true, until this last year, there has been a little more funding that has come in over the last two years, so yes, it has been that. Though for FY twenty-five, that did, uh, see an increase, and I think.
One oh six something?
It was another one oh seven. So.
So twenty-five, we're at two twenty-four as of the end of the last calendar year.
Yep.
We have eighteen in fair share for FY twenty-five.
Correct.
So two forty-two-ish.
Approximately.
And then we haven't seen our twenty-six.
No.
Which we're anticipating is between eighty-four and a hundred and seven-ish, maybe more towards a hundred and seven-ish unless something changes.
If we're hopeful, yes.
Any fair share coming, or is that the one time?
So the governor had proposed in the FY twenty-five budget, and I'm not sure where we are through the, the ways and means process about adding. Also coming from fair share, but adding a hundred million dollar appropriation that would be divvied out to the towns based on road miles. So chapter ninety's formula takes into account population and economic development and all these other pieces, not just road miles. And so they were looking to take a portion of this additional funding that has to be used on transportation and reserve it by road miles, which should help Western Mass. We traditionally have larger road miles with lower population in comparison to our Eastern Mass counterparts. Um, I don't know if that will survive the budget process. Um, if it does, you could expect an increase, uh, on our, on our, uh, chapter ninety sheet.
So we could anticipate maybe three fifty plus in there next year.
Correct.
In a few months here.
Yeah.
Coming up. Okay, well, I guess full circle to, to bridge, and I mean, your input, if you have any also, um, kinda how critical and important it is to kinda keep that moving forward rather than possibly kinda taking a back burner for a few years. Fund it from capital, fund it from chapter ninety, or don't fund it yet, and see where that takes us. That's kind of the question on the table, right?
Are you talking funding the project?
No. So funding a half of it.
Okay.
Funding, funding half. I say, I wanna say our portion, but, um, adding, the, the proposed articles add a hundred and twenty-five thousand to, to the project. Because it's about half of the overage should cover if they go back out to bid and the costs come in similar to they did last time. assumes the grant is still there and not more, which there may be an opportunity for more grant money, but we don't know yet.
I'm in favor of keeping the article, um, maybe even amending the article information to say that should, uh, our counterpart. You know, this, this money would only get used in conjunction with our counterpart being able to sustainably finance their half. Uh, or their portion. Um, and that if it goes unspent, and it, you know.
Close it out.
Close it out and just put it back. But it, it'll be easier, especially if they're looking for grant funding or other funding sources that could come up on the spot. If we have the money already approved as opposed to, oh, you got awarded a grant, now we've gotta now put together another special town meeting to get money moved and just preemptively do it, have it sitting there. It won't shut down the capital stabilization to hold it for six months until we figure out if, if they're able to find a funding source for their, their end of it. So I'm in favor of keeping it and just being clear that it's not gonna be spent unless the whole project goes forward in collaboration with our partner town.
So just while we're in amending the article information, um, it's the eighth line down. I believe it should say bids that were received are greater than the grant budget, rather than it's reading received a greater.
Mm-hmm.
Just a minor.
Great. But maybe just add on to that last sentence before approval of, to say, and it's contingent upon, you know, Wendell funding their portion to your, to your point, right?
Yeah, I think just letting the, the residents know that it's not gonna get spent unless the whole project goes forward.
And where would that money, where is that money coming from right now that's in, for that article?
Either capital stabilization or chapter twenty, chapter twenty. Chapter ninety, I made up a new chapter, it has money.
Does it have money in it?
I was just gonna ask.
So if it's.
A, a dollar.
If it's capital, this article works. If it's chapter ninety, we don't need this article.
I understand, but I, I guess that's where the article's proposed. The other half of the conversation last time was, there's also chapter ninety, which could be used for this, most likely. What does that look like? So that, those are the questions on the table.
So I, I, I don't have an issue with chapter ninety money being used for this if that's an easier way for it. Just knowing that there'll be that much more that we're gonna ask for, for the, for the road projects.
It's now or then. I mean, if we do both, it's now or then, right? It really, it's, it's one bucket or the other. It's now or then.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is chapter ninety allocated to us and sitting interest earning and bearing like capital is, or?
No.
Not ours until we ask for it with a project and have bills.
Sits with our name on it at DOT.
Sits somewhere else.
We have to do a whole.
Somebody else's interest on it.
Approval request process to draw from it. So it's technically money that is owed to us and we book it.
Right, it's earmarked for us, we just don't get it until we prove we have a need, they say is okay.
Correct, and it, but it does not garner any interest for us or anything like that.
And we don't necessarily move this capital money out until the project was actually materialized anyway, so not necessarily a big difference, just nuances there to call out.
The only, with the chapter ninety, you pay everything upfront. Once they see all the slips, once they approve everything and they certify the closeout, then they reimburse us. So depending on the project or the duration, you could be fronting the funds for a few months until you get payback. Some jobs are quick, and that's like a six-week turnaround, but others can drag on.
Right, leaves more of a cash flow problem.
It's a cash, a cash flow issue.
Yeah.
I would leave it as capital. I, I think that's what makes the most sense.
I agree.
I, and we're going round and round about where to fund it, but capital makes the most sense, so just leave it as capital.
All right, still wanna leave it in? Are we good with it? Way around, yeah.
I'd leave it.
All right, all right. Our confirmation edits, other than that, good to go.
Excellent, I'll make those for.
Thank you. Uh, article two, Church Street Bridge appropriation.
So I did a little, I did my best to balance what we discussed, taking the closeout, and I got the exact balance on what's left in the, uh, the Art Street for Sewer Main project. So there's a transfer request in there for that balance to move into this project fund, and then a transfer request for the balance into capital stabilization.
From capital stabilization.
Correct.
Not into.
Sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you amended it three twenty-five based on what we assessed our actual expenses so far?
Correct, I went back and double-checked, and hopefully the little explanation bubble.
Yep.
Gives you a little understanding.
And we'll fund it from the Art Street balance plus capital.
Right.
Questions, concerns? Good with it?
Good.
Okay.
And does the adjustment to the article information on that one help explain what we're doing? I know that you all said you wanted to make that clearer.
I think it's as clear as it can be.
It's still gonna probably need an explanation.
Yeah.
We got it missing a space, I think, between of and the one point six million.
Yeah, I was looking at that too.
The. Got it. Yep. Thank you. And then the new sentence up to that, completed capital improvement project for the Art Street. So Force Sewer Main, Art Street, Force Sewer Main project has an unspent balance of, that is being recommended to be appropriated towards this capital project. I know, I think that, that we would have borrowed for and all that gets a little convoluted and confusing, and just saying that that is being recommended as part of the funding. I mean, it's set up above, I don't, I don't know if we need to repeat it, but I think it's okay if you do have just taken that part out. And the last sentence, we wanted to be cautious to not say that we're going to avoid borrowing.
That's correct.
It will, it will avoid borrowing for the money spent so far. But we wanted to limit it to say it's gonna avoid borrowing for any money spent so far. We don't know if there's an anticipated situation that we may need to still borrow for.
Okay.
I would, I almost feel like that whole sentence could just be removed.
Which one?
Um, that can be appropriated by the voters or the capital project that we would have borrowed for, period.
Just strike the rest.
Yeah, I don't know if you need the rest.
Okay.
Strike?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the first, in the first two sentences, I think that's, that's the issue. Um, appro, in the first two sentences, maybe trying to make this one, approval of this article will appropriate stated funding amount for the Church Street Bridge Replacement Project. In lieu of utilizing the approved borrowing authority from the May eleventh town meeting and the amount of. So just, we're talking about all that history, really, this article is to avoid doing the borrowing right now, right? Does that make sense?
You know, regardless of you put, you're still gonna have to answer questions, so.
I know, I know. I'm agonizing over it to have to answer it anyway.
Okay, I'll make those change.
Yeah. No changes to three, good with three?
Yep.
Four, allowed use is appropriating, re-appropriating the two twenty-six. Point five thousand.
So the article was for twenties, two, six, five hundred. So because I'm referring to the article that was already approved, doesn't it make sense to refer to what they approved back then? Both with the STM date, the article number, and the amount? And then asking for the amendment? And then the article information explained with the actual balances?
I.
Or is that too confusing?
I don't know, I almost wanna recommend that we, the, the article language is just to amend the purpose and don't put the dollars in there.
Okay.
And in the article information, you just put, there is this much left of that that we wanna use.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Cause we, we're not changing anything financially with what's in the article.
I would, yeah, I agree, and I wonder, do we have to put in, in the article itself, do we have to put in the article six of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, special town meeting, blah, blah, blah?
Yes.
We do have to include?
You have to be that specific.
Exactly what you're changing from.
Okay, never mind.
So not to cut you off, but he's nodding and the answer is yes, we do.
Okay, all right, wow.
But we, the, the dollar amount doesn't have to be, we just have to be very explicit with the voters of what we're changing.
This article from this time.
Change this purpose to this purpose, right?
Okay.
That, that's as concise as we can get, right?
I believe so. And, and we, I added in what it was approved for, and then to say that it would also allow, but we could just strike that up to that point and instead just say to allow it to be used for, and then explain what it is that you want the permission for.
So you're saying amend the allowed use of funding approved article six, January special to also allow for engineering construction of upgraded water line and related expenses on care drive. We do need to say care drive somewhere in there.
Yeah, I think you.
But you can take out the two twenty-six point five K, engineering construction upgrade or field care.
Yeah, keep it simple in the article information, or the actual.
Keep all the details. This is the article, this is the, what we wanna do now?
Yeah.
That's it.
And Linda's right, we're gonna have to explain it anyway.
Yes, we are.
Maybe we'll save some paper.
Okay, so if I make those changes, that's better?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
In the article information, your first sentence ends about in the fourth or fifth line, says sewer and water systems for the same project.
Mm-hmm.
And just change that to be, uh, sewer and water systems for care drive.
Okay.
And then I think the rest, it was originally two twenty-six point five, and the balance unspent is the one forty-nine.
Yeah.
I think that's enough to get people started with questions. Good?
Good.
Yeah. Article four, five? Article five.
You had to remember everything again.
I know, I know. So we adjusted that to the fifty thousand, otherwise, all good?
Yep.
Uh, six, no changes.
Nope.
Seven, no changes, except the, I don't know if the emphasis was there, it's new, can't tell, but in nine eleven.
Nine eleven.
Within article seven.
That's new. I don't know why it didn't get flagged, uh, as a comment.
Kind of odd-looking, but it doesn't quite, yeah.
Cause the next, you, you see it again.
The appointments and terms stagger is, is the ad, right?
That's from your council.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Eight? Eight, we need to decide if we're doing eight.
Mm-hmm.
On here if we're going to do it as an appointed committee for one, some, some period of time before establishing it.
Yeah, I, I missed the last meeting, but, uh, I think we had discussed to start, to give us some flexibility and the composition and the roles and responsibilities. More, a, a more fluid opportunity to be able to make those adjustments, to just keep it as an appointment. But then also know that we always like to have things solidified by the residents, uh, and, you know, made more formal. But give us a year to sort of see that play out and see what's working, see what's not, and then represent this at either an annual or another special with concrete language that we know works, that gets the, the work done that they're trying to get done. So I'm in favor of just doing it as an appointed for now, but letting the residents know. They'll see this language in the future, although, you know, just a conversation, that you'll see some language in the future about formalizing this. Um, but we're gonna be establishing a new committee or commission, I'm not even sure what we're calling it.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you.
Yep.
Okay, so I think.
So pulling this.
Yes, I mean, we'll turn it into language about what we're establishing and eventually it'll probably go back on a warrant, but not this time.
On June twenty-third, would you like me to bring this back?
No. Well, I don't know yet. I say no, but maybe.
Have it drafted, have it ready.
Okay. In terms of us establishing the committee.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm gonna say it's gonna be.
Do we need to talk about it further before the voters have decided if they're adjusting the historical commission, or does that have no bearing on our discussion?
I don't think it has any bearing. I think we should establish it.
Okay.
Before July one, so that we know that we're ready to go. And then let the voters decide what they wanna do with the other, if they wanna adjust it from seven to five.
Well, let's not belabor discussion about what's in there this week, we'll put on next week.
So we'll carry this topic to June ninth as a separate standalone issue.
Pull this out as a separate memo about with that language and we'll talk through the.
And then we can be ready to go.
Yeah, either the twenty-third or. Yep.
Establish it.
Right.
Okay.
Or in the next meeting.
Yep, that works.
Okay. Do we wanna make any adjustments to article seven's article information to comment about this, or just let it be answered on the floor if questions come up about it?
Probably on the floor.
Okay. Works for me. Uh, article nine back to eight.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that.
Twenty-two, uh, twenty-two J, here we are.
So J, we still need information back from the assessors.
Yep.
They'll fall up again this week.
Two, or I, I mean, either of you have any, you take. To, or I, I mean, either of you have any take, or anyone, that they have any better answers right now than we did last time? We talked about this, which was more questions than answers, I don't, I'm not personally ready to decide that we carry this on the warrant. Too unclear about what is going to happen based on what we choose, so I don't think, at least personally, that I'm ready to say we should keep it on.
You talking about J alone, or both?
Well, because they're so dependent, I, it's kind of both, for me. Not that I don't support the idea of them, but not understanding how, what we choose in each of those is going to impact each other or impact at all, it's kind of hard for me to say that, how we do it. Or what, what I think we should recommend doing.
Without understanding the full impact, we can't make an educated decision, as you said, that's, has no bearing on the fact that we're supportive of this, but if we're asked questions on the floor, we can't intelligently answer them.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, it's like, in spirit and in theory, I'm all in favor, I said at the last meeting I was at, I would like to utilize I and J to the fullest extent to make sure that we maximize the exemption allowed for this population. The language that we use to make sure that that happens appropriately, I'm not sure we have that drafted. And if somebody were to ask me to explain how those work in connect, conjunction with each other and how we, you know, what's the long-term ramification, my answer would be, I don't know, but it's on there anyways. So I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, I'm in a spot to, to answer those questions at an STM.
Could, could I suggest perhaps leaving it on there and pass over it if we don't have the answers? The assessors discussed this earlier today, again. The first part, which is cost of living thing, that the state would just decree his, what cost of living is percentage.
Yeah.
And this is, to me, pretty much a more, more easy answer.
Which is I, right?
Yeah. The, the, the second one, J. Sometimes in politics, what sounds logical isn't, so we're, we're trying to get the exact answer. The question was, do they compound? And I think I can explain the example accurately. If, let's just say you were gonna go to 100%, and it was $400, let's say, just picking a number out of the, it's not a real number. 100% was $400. And next year, you get to choose again, what's the percentage gonna be? Oh, we like 100%, let's go to 100%, that's great. Would it stay at $400, or does that mean now it's $800 because we're 400 to start with? Okay, that's the relatively simple question. So we've got the, the frequently answered questions that go to the Department of Revenue by other people asking the same question. Let me have that answer quickly. We also have local representative from Department of Revenue where, I, I told Jackie, I'll call him and say, hey, you know, we need an answer to this question here, because it makes a big difference. If you continue on, say at 100%, if that's what you're gonna do for veterans, or 50%, whatever percentage it is, does it just stay there and that's what it is, or does it compound, so every year you're adding on another whole 100%? So 15 years from now, you're given a $15,000 exemption, which we don't want to be doing that. So I think, I think we'll have an answer quickly. I would suggest if you leave it on there, pass over it if you don't have any, any, if we don't have an adequate answer.
My, I was gonna say, my only concern, I get what Dan is saying, my only concern with that is if any of the boards here want to discuss that answer, we don't have the opportunity to do that at town meeting if we have questions or want further clarification, and I would just say, I appreciate the assessors working on it, but this has been lingering since our annual town meeting. So I don't, we keep pushing it off, but I, and I don't understand why, if it's the, just difficulty in getting answers, or if it's just, like, why these answers aren't forthcoming at this point, it's been a couple months.
I'll give my best attempt to answer that question also in a tactful way that does not insult our legislature, the best I can. The way it was explained to me was, the wording of the legislation could have been a little more clear, we'll say. And when you have departments trying to determine what legislature really meant or intended, and how we're gonna move forward consistently, it's difficult for them to give us a quick answer. But there are enough people asking this question, we really should have an answer. And again, if we don't, and we just say, well, we're gonna pass over this, we don't have the answers. And that, that's, to me, that's the only question there is, does this compound so that whatever amount it might be, do you just add another 100% on top of it, next year, next year, next year, and all of a sudden you're way out of control? Or does it not compound, and if you were to vote next year, you could vote whatever percentage you want? Has nothing to do with adding to it on a big pile of money. I think it's a relatively easy, easy question. Just, it's up to you guys what you want to do. I just don't see the problem with leaving it on there, pass over it if you don't have an answer.
So what I would say is there were more questions than that last time, that this was discussed. Because there's the compounding question, there's how does it compound with I? So if it was 400, and I was 5%, now it's, I don't know, 480, whatever, 408, whatever it is. Then is it compounding the 408 at 100% the following year? Plus the cost of living again? If you change it to zero, does it go 408 off, back to zero, or does it go 400 off, back to eight? Because A stays, or I stays when, even if you change the exemption from 100% to 0%, because every year you can, does the 0% reverse the 400, does the eight stay?
Yeah, the eight.
All those pieces are, are how they work together, where the, the more complexities of how does that, if, if one of the things that we said we'd like to do is maximize it, find a way to do it as quickly as we reasonably could afford to. But also not signing up a future select board, future assessor, future town for a potential liability that they couldn't afford in that year because the valuation of those who are now eligible for exemption because our populations have shifted is so large that it's a liability we really can't afford anymore. So how does the annual adjustment to the exemption allow the then body to make fiscal decision they have to make, if, if they need to? And so those things are the pieces that, we looked at the FAQs, we read all those the other night, and we talked through them at length and didn't come up with clarity on some of those pieces, so that's, that's where, that's where I sit, at least.
Just, just my opinion, and if we differ, that's okay. My, my opinion is, on I, which is just the cost of living, that is what it is. And we owe veterans just the cost of living, and whatever the state says it is, it is. And that just continues next year, year after whatever, that's some small percentage, usually. 3%, 4%, 5%, whatever the cost of living might be. I don't see any problem with that one at all. J is the issue, and doesn't really make, to me, I is just inconsequential, it's a small amount, a small percentage. And it'll, it's whatever the state says it'll be, and that just continues on. J is where we need the question, does it compound, sort of, if it's 400 this year, 800 next year, 1600 the year after? I don't think, it's not logical they would do that, like I started the conversation, logic sometimes doesn't enter right away. But that's the question you need to answer on that big chunk.
And Dan, I, I agree, I, that's why I posed a question, are we talking about I and J, or just J? I don't have a problem with keeping I on there, I think it is a straightforward, it doesn't, it, it just sets a, a a low threshold of the minimum increase that we're gonna see, and it's gonna be based on the, the COLA. We can always increase that, you know, but that's the minimum that will mandate it increase based on that. And I don't see a problem with leaving that one on there and asking voters to vote on that one. The concern I have is what J does to that in years two and beyond, that's all. So I, for me, if we can get that answer, great. If it muddies the water to leave it on the STM warrant, then, you know, maybe the, the suggestion would be leave I, pull J, and have a conversation that there's a second component, but we don't have the answers yet, it'll be coming at a future date. So, you know, just to talk about that as part of the article of I, of saying there's a second one that relates to a different percentage in compounding, but we're still waiting on clarification from the legislature on the nuances. I see your point that they could, because of the numerous questions that all towns are asking, could come back in the next, you know, week with a response that clarifies it. I may not be as optimistic as you in that, but but I, point well taken, that it could happen, and by not having it on there, then you are ensuring that it's gonna wait until the next STM or ATM to get back on there. I, I don't, I mean, I'm not sold either way, it, I don't think it, I don't think it hurts anything to leave it on there, but it is, it can muddy the water about what I does and starts creating more conversations about, you know, the combination of the two together, and so I'd be in favor of leaving I on there and, and at this moment, pulling J and just having a conversation about that J is still on the table, but we're just waiting on more answers. That'd be my recommendation.
That's kind of where I'm at, is to hold a place for that discussion, and perhaps if we have an STM in the fall, and we have answers to all of those questions, and we can bring it back then, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I don't know if we could, even if we have the answers in the fall, could we apply it to FY 26? Just the same, or would that have to go to 27?
I'm not sure.
I'd have to look for research.
Yeah, I'm unclear about when it goes into effect, if it's voted in. And given that it says that the percentage has to be voted before July 1 of the fiscal year. This also anticipates that even if we carried it, it got approved, we're going to be ready to make a decision before July 1 on what that's going to be for the coming year.
True.
And given the lack of information on 6/2, I'm not feeling real strong about that. Now, if we're able to do it in the fall and then make it in effect for then for the rest of the year, great. I don't know if that's allowed, that's not clear either, so.
Right. Can I make you more questions than answers?
Yes, that's okay. They're good questions, because I, I think even if we're adopting it, whether we adopt it in the fall, once we understand it, it's probably more contingent on when it can go into effect. Because if we don't do it before July 1 and set a percentage, and it won't matter until July 1 of next year in terms of in effect, then we just need to do it before July 1 of next year.
Yeah, and-
And I don't know that we're ready to do it today, just because we're running out of time, because we don't have the information.
And I think that bolsters my decision on wanting to keep I, is that we can get that done before July 1, it can go into place, if we can see the automatic increase, and then work on J as time goes on.
Yeah, well, half a loaf is better than no loaf.
I mean, I'll say, I'll reiterate it again, you know, Dan, I think we're up to about 100,000 viewers watching every Monday night, at least. That we, we have said numerous times that, you know, we're looking to make sure that we get the language drafted the right way. I know, I'll speak for myself, I want to see this exemption be maximized to the allowable extent that we have, but that's also affordable for the town at, at the same time. But just knowing what the liabilities are that we're setting ourselves up for, need those questions answered before we say yes. But the, the sentiment was, there's no reason why we don't want to have this population be able to get the maximum amount of exemption allowed utilizing this MGL.
I'm pleased to hear that.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Keep I, remove J.
That's right.
For now.
That's where I'm at.
Okay. Finance, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. I'm good with it. So this is 10, that becomes 11, that's now back to 9? Yep.
I think it's 9 now. It's down to 9 now.
So eight was 9 is eight?
Yeah.
And there is no 9 was 10?
Correct.
11 is no 9.
11 is no 9.
No 9.
And I have no changes to that one.
And council didn't change it, so I'm assuming, yes, I need to have it adopted.
Got it. And this has council's input, so far, because we got-
The only feedback I got back were on those three questions.
Those, yep. Okay. Anything else on the STM?
Nothing.
Okay.
You all are gonna want to see this again Monday, before you sign it?
I mean, we might as well, unless you wanted to get it out sooner than Monday.
As long as I can have a constable post Tuesday, we're good. All right, so I'll either have to work with you or-
Most of it was either complete article removal or language updates, we didn't change anything numerically, so I guess it's more of, is there recommendations now from Capital and Finance so that you don't have to meet next week to give them? Is there an acting chair for Capital tonight?
No.
I can make that happen really quick.
Could you?
I will nominate Linda Bembry to be the acting chair of Capital Planning Committee for the evening.
That's not my name, so I don't accept.
Linda Bembry Downs, Linda Downs Bembry.
Second? All in favor?
I.
I. Your lord sounds like a majority, not a-
Didn't even wait for it accepted, so just do it.
Finance, do you want to vote on it tonight, or would you like to come back next week for another meeting?
Tonight.
Geez, I'm shocked by that answer.
Capital, would you like to do it tonight?
Yes.
Or come back?
Not tonight, too.
Tonight sounds good. I'll still coming back, but I'll make a motion that Capital recommends the Capital articles as amended.
Second? You're the chair.
Although, oh.
Yeah, you got it.
Well, no, I'm thinking, are, are we talking about all of them as a group, or are we talking about each one individually?
My motion was all of the-
We're doing a slate?
All of the Capital articles.
Oh.
Capital recommend all the Capital articles.
All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
All right.
Fincom, is there a motion?
I move we recommend the financial articles on the special town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Any extensions?
Thank you.
Excellent, so we'll see the updated draft with the recommendations and sign it on next Monday.
So you all want to still see it Monday?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect.
We might as well, just for a final proof.
I just don't know if I was going to the background.
There's no financial changes and the recommendations will be done, and if there's any grammatical updates, we'll fix them, but don't expect any. So we will carry it, final draft, Monday approval.
Perfect.
For the night.
Is that all we have for joint?
Tom sounds so disappointed.
Yes, it was. Anything you guys have for us?
Motion to adjourn the joint meeting?
Second.
I wasn't done yet, but okay.
But continue with the select board meeting.
Yeah, that was the next part.
Well, she said adjourn, adjourn the joint, which is what we'll do, and all those in favor of adjourning the joint meeting?
I.
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 The select board will continue that meeting. Thank you all. We'll see you in about two and a half, three and a half weeks, on 25th? Yeah, 25th. We'll hold it here, by the way. Yeah, we're planning to hold the special here, at the senior center.
Oh, it's gonna be here?
Yeah. Yep, we'll be swearing in beforehand and then, right?
Swear everybody in for their new seats on July 1, and then we'll transition into a special town meeting.
Right. No board meeting, only a special.
Yep.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, so what are we up to now?
So we are up to, yes, review the patrol officer position screening committee, composition, potential appointment. Chief is-
He stepped out.
Stepped out, okay. Got it, no, it's fine. The, this was discussed a little bit last week while you were, or last meeting when you were out, and I, so it was about whether or not to add an ex officio member to the patrol officer screening committee and to appoint Chief in that ex officio role. And I, come on up, Chief, we're talking about that, just started, just started. No, no, you're fine, just started. And so Jim was leaning, I, I don't want to speak for you, but was leaning towards supporting that change, and I had said I didn't really see a big reason or driver to make changes from where we were, and anything significant that was illustrated, but you know, was, was either a deficit or a need to, to make a change from, from where we had been.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we left, and just left it that we were, you know, on, slightly on either side of it, so it was just gonna be a bit of a stalemate, right? So we need a tiebreaker.
I get to come back and be the deciding factor, I love it.
And, and any further discussion, not to say not to reopen the discussion. And, and any further discussion, not to say not to reopen the discussion, but wanted to table it at that, and bring it back when you were here, so.
Um, you know.
Either way. And if there's questions or any further comments?
I reviewed, you know, thank you for putting in the minutes and, and part of the discussion. I actually had a conversation with the chief about it as well, about how to move forward with it. There are some, I think there's a need to have him in there, but a limited role, and that's the ex officio role. And it's really more for, I, I view the screening committee as the ability to review all of the applicants, make sure that their credentials are there, make sure that their, the criteria that we're requiring for application is there, and then reviewing the quality of the application. But there may be technical questions about not everybody's experience, or, or, you know, you know, work experience, educational background, is 100% translated line for line into police work. And so, having the chief in there to be able to say, if somebody has questions about how does this translate, how does that, you know, does that even meet the criteria? Yes, no. So it's answering those technical, but not weighing in on who moves forward, leaving that as, you know, just as technical support, but then stepping aside and allowing the committee to make their recommendation. But making that recommendation to the chief, to then hold interviews and do all of that, ultimately, the chief would then make the recommendation to the three of us, for who gets. So I see that as the cascade of, you know, the chronology, chronological order of how that would happen, and then the roles and responsibilities. So I would like to have him named as the ex officio person, so he can be in there to give advice on questions that may come up when they're reviewing those applicants. But not, not as a weighing voting member of which of those applicants get moved forward for interviews. That's still the screening committee's role, to vote on that.
So the screening committee's recommendation, while it would go to chief, and he would do his process, their recommendation comes to us, and then his recommendation, based on that pool, comes to us. Because the screening committee reports to us, not to him. He has the stage in between to do the interviews and the post-validation, verification, and then to bring his feedback from that to us as well, obviously, as department head.
So I guess I-
But to me, the screening committee's recommendation should come to us, too.
See, and that, that's where I have a little concern with that, is that if you're having, now you have two simultaneous things happening, and they may not align.
And that's true with the screening committee, with the department head, who is a voting member, isn't it? Because they may not agree with the vote of the screening committee, but they come to us and give us their take, as well as we hear what the screening committee's results are, because they're different, they're different stages, right? The screening committee is appointed by us to screen and recommend a set of candidates, based on the pool that they have, and what they find from that. What a department head who would ultimately be overseeing that hire, may recommend from that result, doesn't necessarily mean it's the same, or it may be one of, right? That's usually what we see, or, or two of, or something. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it, all of them were their pick.
So then the role, just putting that all into perspective, keeping the, the department head, keeping the chief on as an ex officio member, allows that input at that level of answering questions, and making sure that they have a fully well-informed committee that can make a recommendation to this board, for who they feel should move forward. So it puts him at the table, to be able to have that conversation, and give that input, and give that feedback. We get that recommendation simultaneously, we're then asking the chief to go ahead and perform the first round of interviews, if we also agree on those recommendations of who should get an interview.
Brings up a good question. I don't think that's how we did it last time. I think the screening committee recommendations went to chief, chief then did his interviews, and then the results of both came back to us at the same time. Is that how it went last time?
That's interesting question.
It's not, it's not how it has to be, I'm just, just kind of where we were last time. So then, what came to us was the screening committee recommended these, chief then interviewed, said candidates, and, you know, whatever recommendation chief brought, or feedback from that. And then we had the two of those to then determine what our steps forward were.
Just curious, what was the concern that you had for having the department head on as an ex officio?
I didn't see the, I, I think it was more not a concern of, but a, a lack of really compelling reason to be part of, since there was an additional full process of, of separate interviews, as well as the, you know, required post piece, but it can be a full interview, and not a voting member, so what, you know, other than the technical expertise, which I understand, but we have representation with technical expertise on the committee. So I, I was, I was struggling to see a big reason to make a change. I'm not saying that there's any issue with having chief on as an ex officio, it was more of, I didn't see any compelling reason, that there was something missing with him not being there. And he has an additional step that all the other screening committees that we normally have a department head on, they're part of, because they don't have their own interview process separately. That, that's the difference, right? So.
I hear that, and I don't-
So it wasn't, it was not so much a concern, more of a, no compelling, I didn't find a really compelling reason that there was a deficit that we had.
I don't, I wouldn't call it a deficit, but I think anytime you can add another layer of expertise that can give clarification and information, I'm all for it, and I don't have a problem with it. So, I mean, I would be, I'd be in favor of recommending that we add chief Holst as an ex officio member of the patrolman screening committee, patrol officer screening committee, I forget what we call it.
Sounds like a motion. Sounds like a pretty close to a good one, to me. Are you making that as a motion?
So moved. You have what you need for that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Sorry, this has been so confusing.
No, it's good, it's good. It's good, good conversation. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay? No compelling reason, so you've heard my piece, you know where I stand, all of you, so.
Okay.
Passes?
We'll make the change.
All right.
The cruiser, did we want to mention that, or no?
Do you have time for something that was not-
Unanticipated, sure, sure.
Or I can wait, if there's more, I'm, I can wait, so.
No, do you have something else for us tonight?
Just to make you aware of something.
Yeah, so-
Yes, thank you.
So CAR 4 has, we had an issue with it overheating the other day. By no means am I a mechanic, or any expert, expert in the area. It could be something as simple as the radiator. What's been described to me, from somebody who has somewhat of a technical understanding, is that out of the reservoir for the radiator fluid, is where the fluid was coming out of, which could indicate that the upper motor is, gasket is bad. If it's the radiator, a, a quick price from Bex was 1,200. If we're looking at the gasket, we're looking at 3,000 to 7,000. Don't know if it's worth, at this point, I mean, we've talked about this before, and-
Did it get looked at yet, or are you sending it in?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would have to tow it somewhere, and i- is it worth looking at? Is it?
That's a question.
That's, that's the question, right.
You're not, you're going to be down a vehicle for how many months if you don't repair, if we don't repair it? I mean, I don't see why we don't have to at least find out what that bill will be. Even if it's a small bill to figure it out.
Okay.
What do you gentlemen think?
Yeah, I, I agree.
We at least have to understand the scope, right?
The cost of a tow and some diagnosis will give us the ability to make a better decision, so.
So go that far, and then report back?
Yeah. Yeah. Don't actually do any work, just to diagnose, just figure out what it is.
Get it, get it looked at, and get an estimate on what it needs, and we'll do.
And then we'll come back.
And then we'll decide what to do with it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, chief. I probably should have clarified, but the rest of the fleet is functional, yes?
Yes.
Okay. I know we've had some other car issues, so.
With some woods, yeah.
Every time we talk about something, it's-
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
And the cruiser for FY26 is in process, but to your point, that takes months.
And we're going to receive delivery on July 2, 2020.
Do you mean October, November 2, maybe?
Right. Okay, thanks, chief. Where are we now? Review of meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2025.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, as written.
Any discussion?
I'll second it, just to move it forward. I wasn't here.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any abstentions? I will stand.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe the last item we have, review and approval of agreement with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments for regional energy planning assistance.
So hopefully the memo helped. This is like a part B to the grant application that you all agreed to let us jointly submit with the COG earlier this year. This would be COG applying to the Department of Energy Resources, through the Green Communities Program, for some funding to assist us with a competitive grant application, likely the next Green Communities. We haven't applied since our designation grant. Doesn't mean we've identified the project yet, we'd be coming back to the three of you, and probably Capital Planning, to discuss what our projects are in the queue, and help identify what your priorities are, and then work that into the grant application. But this would allow COG to get up to $2,000 through the, the DOEAR Technical Assistance Program to support us.
Right, so they'd be applying to get DOEAR funding to write grants for us?
To help us with this grant application.
For this kind of funding?
Correct.
So, do we want them to get money to help us?
Yes.
That we don't pay for?
Yes.
To possibly get more free money?
Yes, we do.
I thought you would look.
Free money? Any questions on that?
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Franklin County, Franklin Regional Council of Government, and the Town of Irving for regional energy planning assistance, effective June 2, 2025.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's right next to the gentleman.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, yeah, it needs all of us. It does have a spot for all three of you.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay.
Any other items of business for tonight?
AP warrant.
Just AP warrant.
Ah, yes, thank you.
I'll just jump right into it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the 24th accounts payable warrant for fiscal year 2025, in the aggregate amount of $350,812.44, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And as authorized, I approved the payroll warrant for May 22nd, the 23rd payroll warrant, in the amount of $217,705.84, and the 23rd payroll benefit warrant for FY25, in the aggregate amount of $75,220.05.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other business? Okay, with that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
At 8:12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.